Can you take me, you can take me. So, um, welcome to the finance meeting of the 17th of June. Our first agenda item is to elect a chair of the finance committee. Do we have any nominations?
I did nominate someone for Eric, so I propose Eric as well, because I think he'd be an excellent candidate.
Do you accept?
Yes, I'll do it for another year.
Okay, so write that down, propose a second. Right, Jess has just learned, and so you put yourself down?
Yeah.
Yeah. Second, yeah, all in favour, so that's fine, you can look at it afterwards. Look at that. Propose, so, um, P H.
Yep.
The second by R S. Well. Leave that in one hand.
Right, so what we'll be doing is...
Oh, wait, come here, come here, come here, come here.
Great, you can go first.
Well, I've got two lots, you see.
A flood interrupted the meeting, called for halt eighteen thirty-three. I'm just filling water for coffee.
Just, I've got a cough, I've only bagged a bottle, so I need some water. Never mind, get that. Ready?
Let me get this agenda up.
I've got a copy if you want.
Right.
Want my copy, want this copy? Almost got your name on it.
I've got the agenda, I'm just trying to, I'm just giving you the agenda practice, so I've looked at it, you look at it. Right, so you're done with the chair, we need a vice chair now, do I have any nominees?
I'm happy to sit for Eric if you want. My second one.
Right, to appoint an internal scrutiny here, Wendy.
I think we've already done this, because I think it was in the finance, but I put it on there again, that's something that we do at this point anyway, I think.
You put me down for it, I'm happy to continue.
Are you proposing, somebody needs to propose that.
Yeah.
Paul, yeah. Um, proposed by R S, second boy, you're going to second that?
Eric, yeah. Is that all right, just, just let's take it. Right, apologies for it, for absence.
Um, is Bob right?
Who else is on the committee?
And there's Robert Reed, now he's not been very well, so I did email to the E T C what happens, and I don't know, he's missed all his phone calls, I don't even know if he's got his emails. He hasn't apologised, but...
Received decorations of interest, more important, blue.
Anything to do with, uh, good neighbour scheme?
I don't think there's anything in there.
Don't need to register N C C M, I direct employer at all, the one thing.
No, because you've done that on your, on your register of interests.
Right, minutes of the previous meeting.
We might just want to quickly, having read them, do you want?
No, I haven't got them on my agenda pack, I couldn't see them.
Well, they're separate.
Right, um... Who's here? Well, I move, um, I move that these are accurate, have you seen the report?
I have, yes.
Are you content?
Okay.
So, proposed by, the accepted by, protected by Paul. But we proved the minutes. Right, now, just looking at... Is it all white and red?
No, not really.
These dates, it's the seventeenth of the sixth. I'll try that one again, will I? Right, um, just wanted to... Right, the clerk with the headscarf will look at the current cemetery to find out how soon a new cemetery will be needed.
That's fine.
That's, that's in progress, so can we just note that that's in progress, please, Jess?
This is number seven, to update on that.
And then, right, and then this was, and the back return will be reviewed by the finance committee each quarter.
Yeah.
Are we doing that?
No, because we don't put it until the end of June, so they'll come to you next time. But we'll have to submit it, and then just bring it to you, you're not reviewer, you'll just look at it.
No, so the V H G will come, will come to the next one. All right, thank you. Right, that's fine.
I'll take that, yep.
That's the update on matters from the previous minutes, item seven, review policies and terms of reference, which are on the screen.
So can I just say something?
Yeah, carry on, Wendy.
So we had a look at this, and the budget, we decided to take the budgets out of each, because it's out of each group, because there's just a big budget, and we just keep an eye on the budget, so I couldn't, I couldn't see any point of each little committee having their own budget. Um, because personnel had a six thousand, and they never needed that, I don't see why finance need one, because it all comes into admin, there's a budget there for admin, there's a budget there for office, coded, so I could not see any reason for that to be...
I would agree, I mean, it's just, twenty nineteen.
It's absolutely silly.
They'd say predated that in some way, is it?
Yeah.
We were on the same approach, now we've basically sacked what the individual ones all covered, you've done.
Yeah.
And it's a fine associated budget, if people don't use it, because they just go, I've got six thousand pounds, then it actually, there's much better approval process.
And the budget is, is that right, we put it all in the budget anyway, don't we?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's all over there, it is.
The only other thing is, I'm, I've marked in red, is the open and consideration of check tenders recommended to full council, or we don't, usually tenders come by email, they don't come in brown envelopes no more, they come by email, I see them, I redact them, and I take to cancel. Or take them to yourself, or take them to full council, or time sensitive, aren't I? They don't come in brown, they used to come in brown envelopes.
Right.
Um, and the other one I marked is, oh, me and Jess marked is approved, the end of council and government statement, that has to be done by full council, it can't be done by finance and state. So they're the ones that I marked.
Apart from that, no change.
No. The only other thing, I changed the call at three instead of, that was four, and I changed it back to three. I wonder, yeah, so that's, that's the three things that we...
We can decide our, our level of four eight, or is that the actual rule for council?
No, because it will be three councillors here, because we agreed that a while back, when we didn't have many councillors, and we agreed at three.
Okay, so just to make sure that we...
Well, agreed by all, right. So we agree the amendments to the finance branch terms of reference.
Um, do I need to propose one second, or do I just take a proposal second? Second?
No.
Yeah, all right.
All in favour? Right, thank you. Right, the next one, Wendy, is the financial regulations.
Well, yeah, I didn't know where about to own create a approved suppliers list, so Bob sent an email today to say at five point nine. Um, but, and wording for it, but I did put it right, we did put it right at the end, didn't we? I brought two to to review approved suppliers list annually.
Well, this year, the council, the full council reviewed it, didn't they? Last meeting.
Right, oh, I wasn't there, so to take that out, but I want to share what's...
But I don't, well, what's interesting is an approved suppliers list, and then I looked at the powers delegated. And there's no reference in there to, if you're using an approved supplier, what's delegated?
You talk about and think about that, don't we?
I mean, there's no point having an approved suppliers list.
So you have an approved suppliers list, so if you've got a budget, and you use an approved supplier... You try and use your approved supplier, so I find it really difficult, if you've got an approved supplier, and then have a budget, and then why have to take it to council, so if you use the approved supplier, you should be able to just use them.
Budget against approved supplier, we, we operate approved suppliers list, you know, just small value stuff, you know, into the largest stuff, approved supplier, they are your approved suppliers, you can guarantee that work, you've done the star checks on mental insurances, et cetera, et cetera, where they belong to a special membership, obviously contractor, has mad or something like that, what they've actually got, and then, you know, the approved suppliers is stroke trusted contractors, because it's like trust trade, but when you use, there'll be trusted contractors, and outside of that as well, one thing's been introduced now is, you've got contractors for specialist items, because you can't get three quotes or something, because they aren't, there's only one person in Norfolk that serves...
So if you use an approved supplier up to a certain level, you don't need to have three quotes.
We don't need, we don't need the three, the three quote, because you've gone through a validation process, and you've got best value for money, so you, you will look at it, because it's so many times, it's a very labor process to get, and then you're waiting for, we've gone out for quotes, we don't get them, actually, it's quite time sensitive as well, but it's best value for money at all times.
So there is no, so it could be a million pounds contract.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, up to threshold.
Up to threshold. So up to three thousand pounds, it says in there.
Well, I say, could I ask you to relook at the delegated powers for approved suppliers and bring it to the next meeting?
Yes, can we, yeah.
Given that the list was drawn up arbitrarily.
Yes.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Probably sensibly revisit it now, just to ensure that we are...
So can we then...
Rather than just people we've used in the past.
Can we agree that we'll bring the financial regulations back once you look to appropriate threshold for using, um, approved suppliers?
Because I wasn't at the last meeting, so I wasn't to share what you wanted.
Using approved suppliers under delegated authority.
Up to a certain amount.
Up to a certain, we need you to have a look at it.
Yeah, I will do, so like up to three thousand pounds, I can just use, and I don't have to, I can use anybody, and I don't have to...
I would have thought you could do it with all three thousand.
Change your credit, so it's easier to come back an appropriate figure for what you do.
An appropriate figure, well, you know.
Previously, they had a problem with me having delegated authority.
Well, we're not there now.
But it is something that I think that could be changed.
There's a picture about the department's authority to act, but there's a, um, public building for the public, and also health safety public, well, so there's a process to, you've got to respond to that, so I think it's quite a proactive approach, is that we look at what that threshold would be, you know, in excess of, to deliver what is realistic, if we get something happen, that it could be, you know, get a scaffolding in, get a contractor in quick, it's like, there could be more than that, you know, so it's...
It's like, I need a piece of work done, I need it done quite quickly, and it's going to cost...
Yeah, so what we need, what we're asking you to do is to, um, relook at the, um, delegated, uh, powers in relation to the approved suppliers, um, with a view to recommending to the committee in the stakes meeting in appropriate threshold.
Because also I can do contracts up to a thousand pound, up to a year, but I can't do three year contracts.
But there's no point having an approved suppliers list, where that kind of left, because as you rightly say, they've all been checked out, and could we also ask that the approved suppliers list is reviewed?
We can do that, can't we?
Yeah.
And then, and that's...
When that's goods or service or contract, or contract, it's the same process, when you've got a queue of process to find goods or service, that can be...
It might be, if it's not being looked at, like, there might be someone...
Yeah, brilliant, thank you.
Right, the next one is the financial risk management, um, do we need to ask for the, yeah, I move that?
Oh, yeah, Eric proposed. Your mic?
Just stop me if I'm going too fast.
We're not recording this meeting, but we know that will go on, I'd hate to...
Right, financial risk management. Financial risk management. I think I done this not so long ago, didn't I?
You haven't highlighted any changes.
No.
I mean, it says adopted by the council, it's meeting held on the thirtieth of June fifteen.
Yeah, because that was original, so that's when you first adopt the policy, but then you review them.
Right, okay.
So, um, I made some amendments, I think.
Right. Okay.
And I've kept the R F O and the clerk, I know I am the clerk of the R F O, but just so...
Okay, so, Paul, do you want to move this one? Yes.
Yeah.
Right. The next one is the grants.
Oh, the, oh, actually, the retained balance for the current account is fifty thousand, I think that's far too much, because in, in here somewhere, it says, to keep through, in the minute, in the minutes, it says to keep it at three months expenditure, doesn't it?
The operating cost or expenditure?
Operating cost.
Operating cost.
Because we can always get the money out, but to keep fifty thousand in the current account is a lot of money.
So what would you suggest?
We keep, we keep ten thousand in there, don't we?
I'll change it to ten thousand.
And each day, we go and check and do transfers.
With instant transfers, there's no point in having money that's not earning interest.
Right, so we prove it subject to that amendment.
The wages account is kept at five hundred.
Right. Grants. Yeah, I did have a look at this, it goes back to June two thousand and sixteen. Um, my only review is that, that subject to any comments you've got, I think this needs to be reviewed, it's not really very appropriate.
No, I haven't had it, it does need to be reviewed properly, I haven't had a chance to have a look at it.
What I'm saying here is that, um, I mean, it says things to council, we're not considering applications for grants to support routine maintenance, salary or routine administration costs, well, we do fund, for example, Norfolk community transport.
Yeah, but that's not out of this as well, that's out of something else.
I know, it's out of the base grant, but when it was done, there's no reference in here to the base grant. Which should be governed by some kind of policy, I would have thought. Um, there's other things here, upward fund, there's local groups who raise funds directly for redistribution, but we approved a grant last time for an organisation, part of whose funds, as I understand it, go to charities.
Yep.
So we're going to need to...
So it's like, we give money, for them to just then send to another charity, or we could have given it to that charity in the first place.
We need to think through these kind of events, and what the town council...
Yes.
Um, because they are events which people attend and enjoy, in addition to raising money for charity, because there's a carnival and all the rest of it.
But we gave the grants, and that, should have paid for like a band or something, shouldn't it, we should have seen receipts for that.
All I'm just saying, you might, all I'm saying is that we just need to see if that's the appropriate model, given that it's, you know, they put on something which is, has the wider benefit than simply redistributing and surplusing corporate charity.
That's the purpose of which that money is to be used for, and how far, whether it's local charity, Norfolk charity, anchor charity, for some reason, it's like, it says here, it's going to be a lot of individuals for town, isn't it, for that, so it's having best views on that and make that statement.
I mean, it might be that it's for specific purpose within it, to fund the carnival procession or something, but we need to look at the wording, because how it's worded poses a challenge.
Okay. Can, can you come back and help me with that then?
Well, can we, yes, um, if you want to give me a call with this sometime, come back and...
Anybody else want to?
Oh, I'll come in and say if somebody else wants to back.
I wonder whether we're all sort of looking, the whole thing, to look at the maximum amount we might want to award, there's been seven fifty for several years now, inflation was challenging.
So I've got a couple of grants coming for, for skate to back, because of that voluntary thing, I went and said, oh, we've got a grant pot, because there seems to be the same old people apply for our grants, and they can't, there's a few people that are in the volunteer business, and I just said, we do have a grant pot, and that'd be nice to see other people come forward, rather than the same old.
And also, we're stipulating the big grants, like a lot of places now do, that you can only apply for grant once within every three year cycle, so you stated that, you know, you've, because if somebody's, that, because what tends to happen, at E D P, the big awards place, they say, if you're a filly recipient, you can't apply for three years now, because certainly there'll be an opportunity to, I think, it will hopefully drive people to do it, so by setting a, a one opportunity for three years, I think actually it equals, it's nothing to say that you, that you can't do it, you're trying to encourage more people to use that, rather than the sake of the benefit.
Well, if they want a regular thing, then it's right, needs to have separate amendment to about going into the base budget.
Well, the, um... Please stay here, isn't it?
Yeah, but, you know, if you're going to have, only apply once every other year or three years, if they actually need money on a more regular basis, then it's the base budget.
Yeah, you budget for that, because that's a town supported activity, not a one off, a grant is, what a grant actually says, it's usually one time event to support. The thing, do we make a donation to Christmas lights?
No, because...
We've had applications before, I've worked there.
Uh, we have, um, we make a donation, don't we, our grant to the fun day, Christmas lights, you know, and it's something that I'm, as a councillor, I think we should be purchasing some nice Christmas lights ourselves.
They certainly need improved.
Well, that is a project I'm working on at the moment, with the, with the wires, so...
We've got six months.
Well, the wires are imminent, I've just got to put some planning application in, and then have some nice wires, so...
A lot of the other one.
Yeah, so I dare, I dare us to have like wires at the beginning, at the beginning of the town, so welcome to North Yorkshire morning, live Christmas lights.
Two, one, go in and then...
And then, yeah, so I'll have my own Christmas lights.
Well, at the end of the day, it's somebody after go for amenities, and they're after taking a view about how we do this. Right, okay, so we agree to, um, review the grant to all policy.
Yep.
Do you want any comments from us all, or, or no, 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 give us ten days to do it?
Yeah, ten days.
That'd be brilliant, that is obviously...
This is muted, that there's a huge comment, and we, we did it twice, yeah.
Ten days, just send it to me and Jess.
And then when you've got some comments in, come with Jess or Wendy or whoever, have a look at it. I mean, I understand why all this and the delta grants wasn't working, but they don't always meet the needs of what we want to fund and encourage.
Yeah.
Certainly like to see us encouraging the youth groups to.
Well, that's why I went to the scouts and the guides and I think I've had a grant application in for them and I think. You know, maybe they needed a projector or something. So I said, we've got that ideal. That's the sort of thing that we can.
Moving on, the investment policy, well, we recently approved.
Yeah, there's no change to that, is there? Unless anybody else can see anything. So what I, what I do, I don't mean anywhere, I just rip up from another council.
Yeah, yeah. The investment policy, we just approved that.
Second, go ahead.
I believe.
And Paul's second.
There's a reserve, we need to do that in March.
March, we recently approved the reserve policy. So we move that we do that. Internal controls, anything you've got on that at all, whether?
No, we've done that, didn't we? Not so long ago.
Right, so we moved that we approved that.
Just the purpose of OCD, of the foot, something time growing other than here.
There's a quick, there's a quick job to go in today. Anything other spelling mistakes that you've tried?
Trying to get them all the same size, I've always had one.
Policy power falls under my law, possibly. Now, it's good, I've done so, yes.
We know that, we know looking at our website to make sure it's compliant and stuff like that.
Right.
Right, just discuss outsourced payroll.
Yeah.
There was a recommendation on the audit, but I think we're quite competent now in doing payroll. I mean, Jess does it, I double check it. There's no problems with payroll.
So you've got, you've got one that fills it out, one completes, the north horizon, all separate. So you've got control.
Yeah, we have control. I'm not too sure I like the programme that we use. It's complicated. And I use, use programme manager, is it payroll manager? I don't like it. I use Brightpay when I was at Alsham. It's so much easier. And there's HMRC basic, but that's for, you can only have maximum ten employees. I like Brightpay.
So what's the staffing levels that we play? Who we've got numbered on payroll currently, how many?
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight.
And Brightpay can do how many? Up to?
Ten, but that can do more in pay for licence.
No, I was thinking, it's only, paper loss, if you look at the changes to local authority, the way that we could employ more employees, etcetera. So it's a system that's more efficient and more practical, you know, and it's a bit better supportive through software upgrades and everything else.
I like Brightpay. I don't particularly, and I, I mean, I used to do payroll for the days and weeks, so I am quite.
That's, that's, that's as well on that, is it? Direct, that's as well through.
We don't have many expenses.
Yeah, instead of buying the old set themselves, purely for your use, yeah.
The yearly certificate fee, isn't that?
Yeah, I don't know how much, if there is for Brightpay. My God, Brightpay's only a hundred.
It's quite difficult to navigate when that, at year end, it's quite, it was really difficult to navigate, wasn't it?
Does the, does Crossway go the NRC contributions, the NRC itself?
Yeah, definitely does and it does the.
That's one of the big, some amended, some amended, once you get the, also the RTI to HMRC as well, to Brightpay, to do that, that system was better for you. I think as a committee, it better have a, a system that's functional.
Brightpay, I prefer Brightpay. I don't like paying a manager at all. It's kind of clunky, yeah.
It is clunky.
But we can't do anything until the end of year.
Yes, and also we've got your outsourced costs as well. So you, on outsourced, are you paying percentage of total payroll?
We don't have it.
Now, if we're outsourcing it, you, you, there's obviously pay a percentage of payroll costs, don't you? And also you pay for annual fee as well. So if we believe we can cover that internally, potentially, the savings exist, we're having it internally. And if any issues, you can source it internally.
I feel confident that we know what we're doing.
It's a bright pay would be cheaper.
Yeah, it's only a hundred pounds. I think.
Per annum, per month.
Around.
Is that the right quote?
Hundred pound up to ten employees and then that's for the licence and then more.
It's a bit cheaper. Yeah, and savings over going up to market and procuring external services where, you know.
I mean.
Well, well, in your.
I'm really confident that we know what we're doing, because we sit at every issue and do, you know.
What's, what's the timing cost in terms of transferring systems at the end of the year?
We're just, we can just, they automatically input from the other system or we'll set them up. I mean.
They are basically just transferring it.
But that'll be the end of the year that we do it. So you can put in there to. Brightpay, yeah.
Will we want to report back to full council to authorize that area?
On.
Report, we can more. On, on switching.
Payroll provider, but put that as a recommendation to.
Yeah, as it was in the audit anyway.
Yeah, because we're changing, she only made like my safe.
Yeah, the recommendation. Just, just to keep everything completely open and it carries my risk as well, isn't it? So it's.
Yeah, opposed by. For second line. Pension update on that bit as well. Oh, and the pensions, there's a gentleman coming to see me Thursday.
He's coming twenty seven point nine thirty.
Twenty seven point ninety thirty. He's called Nick. And he's going to come and speak to me. I've given him a little bit over the phone, but he's going to come and have a look. Mrs. Pensions that may have been gone wrong over many, yes, don't know what.
How many staff LGPS? You're all LGPS.
All of them. And there was a problem, which happened when I started.
If you need a briefing, probably you need to talk to the clerks.
Yeah, exactly.
The LGPS is very interesting. Ventures game.
Quite good, good pensions.
Yes, good ventures game, but causes a problem, set up businesses. Pension strain, you know what, lovely.
Yeah, I hope it will have an update to bring to the next, yeah. Okay.
Yes, so we're asking, seven minutes is what, we're asking for an external consultant to look at it.
He's going to come in and speak to me. He may tell me, whatever's released, all you've got to do is this, this.
All right, so we're seeking. So the minute needs to say that we're just seeking external advice and a report will be made to the next one. Right, okay, internal auditor's report.
I hope, yeah, I hope there's a time to read it. There wasn't much. I've done a little thing, little. So, uh, what was there?
The only thing, I glanced at this very quickly, it says. Satisfactory budget being placed, the pre-set was agreed in full council.
I forgot to put the amount in. That's the only thing I forgot to say, the amount of our preset, so.
Oh, we did that. Well, then we went through quite a lot.
Naughty went, I'll make sure I do it next time.
We've got a lot over that, right, okay.
And the only other thing I didn't tell you about the. To say that PKF Little John had come back and the end of audit and everything was fine, I don't think it's a meeting. To review the external auditor's report at the next meeting of the council. So I'll do that. I will do that.
Because the external auditor, that's just almost, so once the ADR returns in, that's just almost, just a quick check and it's signed off.
Yeah, so the recommendation is the council intending to continue binding the minutes, in which case minutes do not need consecutively numbering. If minutes to remain in a loose reformer is a requirement, that minutes should be consecutive and continually numbered, either by age number or by minute item. It is noted that agenda packs contain supportive information to the agenda published on the council's website along with the minutes and retains the cards, which is backed up. Because in our external auditor to report, the. Do the numbers report, it said to keep all the agenda pack at the back of the minutes. However, she didn't agree with that because she said if I bind the minutes, that the binding is only the minutes. We always used to have them that's bonded. And then all the agenda pack is comes out, is saved on, saved on our one drive and it's in the cloud anyway, so we wouldn't lose that and it's on the website. So it would never be lost.
So you've got the numbers to see this is. Just on there, just, is there, is there the asset value, there are assets on this?
Yeah. Not on here, there is on the A G, which you'll see next week. And next minute meeting, I will be bringing the asset register to you to review.
Right, okay. So we don't have to appoint an external auditor because it just goes on centrally, isn't it?
We've already appointed, we've already agreed our internal auditor.
No, we don't. They aren't talking about the external.
Oh, no, we don't. That's somebody that's already done.
Right. Do we need to approve any of all of that or just, you just load the internal auditor's report?
Reports, do you want me to take it to full council as well?
Does it have to go there or can you just put it in the clerk's report?
I would be more confident if it went to full council as well, to say finances reviewed it, but.
Yeah.
I'm there with the recommendations, but I think it should come again.
There's a risk of increasing the length of the meeting. I think you're right. Again, I'm very conscious that we need to be absolutely open with everything.
Right, okay.
It goes to all the answers to see then.
Okay. Yeah, we've got a reserve.
Um, yeah.
Wendy.
The cemetery is seventy three thousand. It always has to remain at seventy three thousand because that's what we sold, we sold. We sold Cemetery Lodge, four hundred and eighteen thousand. And we spent some money on getting a compound at the cemetery so we could use some of that capital for a compound because it's at the cemetery. So that is capital and money in the cemetery. It can only be spent on cemetery.
So there are, just to help the committee, there are a number of things at the cemetery which amenities is either approved or in the process of going for the system. One is a welfare hut. Um, which is, pardon, the other is a portable water storage and a whole three thousand litres of water. Both for Graham's team and also as a reserve for North Yorkshire.
I think we seem to find.
Yeah, yeah, there's this one. There's also the issue of redecoration of the chapel. That are approved in here, it's being discussed by me. So there's a number of things within the cemetery that are there. And also, if I'm correctly, if I'm wrong, we can also use this for any preliminary expenses on the new cemetery.
Yeah, we can do.
So just for the new cemetery, what is our consensus in the range? The cemetery's got a number of plots left and expected spaces.
It's something that I'm looking into.
Yeah, so it's that, that critical pathway where cremation versus burial, number of plots available, pre-purchased plots.
Oh, when I went down the cemetery, there was loads of space.
Still a plot, I believe, for the cemetery.
Yeah, I do, yeah. Um, there was loads of space, but so I don't know how large the cemetery is.
I should look at where we sort of forecast, which I say, if you look at the numbers of death rates versus burial, etcetera, that means we're looking at for seven years.
We have about ten muriels a year, don't we?
Slightly increased, yeah.
When you make the muriels.
Now, so you've got to have a great, do the great thing, I guess, yours.
That's all part of ground state.
Yeah.
Just had a go at it.
You, you, you are probably, but we are, have been investigating it, size at the end of Crome Road for some time now, including ground surveys.
I think it also depends on the grave that's needed, as to how deep they can go, as to where they can drop them.
So the land we're looking at is, or we have an option on the record.
I'm, I'm not sure of the contractual details, but I presume we have a, we have a written agreement with the land.
I think it's a written agreement.
I've never seen it. I know we've been having a spot here, we did all the ground surveys.
Going down to town, past water, so there's a dog, pets, animals. And then there's a field on the right side.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a bit, there's a bit of a problem with highways at the moment, visibility.
I did warn you.
Visual displays.
Those things can usually be resolved, but those can usually be resolved at huge, considerable expense.
Um, we've had a drainage report, that it's simple from a drainage. The next issue now is to resolve the highways issues.
I'd want to do that before I even looked at.
It's all geotechnical, groundhog treasure, because the geotech.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's all done. The reports about it is on.
Highways are not keen at all.
No, that is my concern originally. It still crosses fast lane, it's six miles, I don't know, it's sixty, about thirty. That comes as a fast lane requirement for access, and it goes on to.
So we'd have to look at moving the speed limit. And it's on the bays, so it's visibility.
One side of the bays.
Okay, so that's, that's the similar.
So it's there, it's there anyway, so.
I'm concerned for that, burn that quite quickly with all the other bits. Oh, yeah. That's why, that's why I asked for it earlier in the year.
Actually, the pension reserve isn't.
Look, it can be that much. Land we currently have, only here for ten years, it's been too much.
One, I was wondering when I was looking at this, there was a new cemetery. Well, at the moment, if there's any preliminary costs, it's coming out of cap. So I'm not sure fifty seven, fifty eight, seven point seven is just sort of hanging there for no real.
I don't know where it comes from, probably from my time.
Can you have a look at that?
Yeah.
Fifty seven, seven, four, three, yeah.
So what, why it's like that is because when we done the test, that came out, that figure.
Yeah, under, under the, as I recall back, right, in under the old systems. Not, not particularly efficient. They were the earmark sum in reserves, the new cemetery.
And that probably was like sixty thousand.
Yeah.
It's not capital, this is capital up here.
Yeah.
That's capital, seventy three thousand.
That's just, that's just in, in reserve. That's just earmark, that's just earmark.
But it's, but if you're going to have a new cemetery, given the cost of it, we must certainly have to go to the public, we're careful. So I think we need to review whether we need to have that as an earmark reserve mode. Because any preliminary costs on the new cemetery can come out of the seventy three thousand.
Yeah, can do, yeah.
Because that cemetery.
It's cost, it's cost associated, isn't it?
We've purchased, so we can do that. So we need to review that.
We could take that out and, and put that as a pension reserve instead.
Yes, I think we just need to review this. Vehicle maintenance, do we need forty, or is that new vehicles as well as maintenance?
Yeah, I mean, I could call it new vehicles. I think we will need new vehicles very shortly.
Every time I look at our truck, I think.
I don't, I think we should have it as new vehicles because.
We buy our lease, have it.
Yeah, I would like, quite like to lease it.
Is it, well, just, we stepped away from buying because of the, you know, you've got a better value asset appreciation.
We don't depreciate, parish councils don't appreciate their assets.
No, obviously if you replace the vehicle, it'll have a residual value on the sale of the existing vehicle. So you can do a, the cost, because book value is zero. But residual sale value is X, you get the book, you get the depreciation, but whatever that's going to be worth at a certain amount, you know, against your fleet leasing. So you've got a lease arrangement, contract maintenance, something up there. It does actually sometimes, it works a lot better, especially for risk and liability that we were carrying as small town councils. I would consider looking at leasing those, those three.
We never lease to lease, I don't know why. I mean, a lot of councils lease that there.
It's, it's, it's history, it's never changed. The machine needed replacing.
Because.
Will be replaced. Vehicle lifecycle, so look at the vehicle lifecycle, we take a ground utility vehicle, give that a five to seven year lifecycle for what it does. Mind your relevance sometimes with the work it does. Cost that into that, add some improvement with that, service maintained, pushed on through. You've not, you've not spent that physical spend, you're paying on a monthly basis for that. You're not fronting with it. Everything is pushed through, you know exactly the service maintenance costs are, got your fuel costs to pick up on that. And then within the six year point, for six years, look at, replace that vehicle the next year, come back out to the supplier, put your supply chain in place, better vehicle. Better vehicle, tail lift on the vehicles as well, which maintain maybe six months anyway, tail vehicles, so that has your expectancy six months.
I mean, have to have them inspected.
Because they're personally.
If we service, if we then lease them, then we'll do that.
I think as we thought towards electric vehicles. I said we wouldn't want to buy an electric truck.
Right, so I think if you can have a relook at the.
I would, I think I would. If you get a new vehicle, I'd like to go from leasing, that's something that I would recommend.
Yes, but we, so we need to review that in terms of the sum. All these DNA.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm going to have to look at them because we don't need a D A A, but I don't know what it is, I don't need a marker, I don't need my.
The only one that makes any sense to me down there is the ten thousand pound vehicle.
Yeah. Um, and there's some more money coming, maybe eleven thousand, something.
Whenever it comes in. So can, because we, we, we may not agree that we review the earmarked reserve or the reserve statement and bring it back to the next one.
And I also need to put in something in there for.
Yes, um, and if the committees agree, we can, we can, including delegated to agree something with me, and we'll bring it back and back to work.
Do we do a non earmarked, so some earmarked money for emergency figures?
Then we have our general.
Standard general, okay.
Um, so.
Mr. Barr, for the moment. You have a general reserve.
But looking at the forecast, we might have to take some money out of that reserve to balance the budget issue, but anyway.
So we do have pensions, yeah, but we've only got half our precepts in there.
In the.
In the general reserve, there's only half a precept coming.
Yeah, well, all I'm saying is we need to review this and.
Oh, yeah.
Update it, let's get it. Um. Because I rather have the whole lot in there, we can see what we've got.
Ah, what does that say? Discuss, that's fine, we'll just.
Because basically, going to the pre, the, the precept.
I just, we're just discussing that, we're not agreeing anything, it just says.
But really, given that it's the precept, I don't see why the whole lot can't be in the reserve.
It's guaranteed.
It's guaranteed, but anyway, we'll discuss that. Right, now, the next thing we've got is receipt and payments. Wendy.
Oh, oh, Jess. There we go, there's the receipts and payments.
So what to actually say, because I might have a chance to look at this, other than.
So this is the one that goes to time, this is the net position where you're, we are still, look, so it's budgeted amenities.
Right.
Our actual.
So when you look at the total figures, the budget is four hundred and eighty three thousand?
Yeah, and we've four hundred and sixty seven in payments, receipts is four hundred and eighty three thousand. And payments is four hundred and sixty seven.
Which, right, and the variance is.
So it's two hundred, we spent two hundred and ninety five thousand.
No, we.
No, well, actual is a hundred and seventy two, sorry. And our receipts is two hundred and forty five. So we're going to be over if I keep going that way around it.
Slow down a bit, will you?
Your receipt is good, isn't it? No, receipt is all right. We've had a lot of expense, we might go over.
Yeah, just saying, we'll come on to the budgets in a minute. Just saying on the budget, I wonder if you could look at that figure, because I think that was the figure last year.
What, four eight, three, oh, seven, oh?
Hmm. Because the budget this year was four nine, two, five hundred.
Okay, well, we did have a look at that, didn't we? So I'll just go back and review that.
Right, the figure you produced. I'm sorry, I, I couldn't come back. Um, there we are.
We put the figures in for the budget.
It was four nine, two, five hundred, look.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back and have a look at that.
Which consisted of four hundred and thirty was the precept and sixty two was income.
Okay, we'll have another look at that.
You look at that.
Yeah, definitely, we'll do.
So I think if you can, um.
Do we see a budget trend between sort of January to December? Do you see that sort of, where you, because like, you can get ahead of budgets, so take the deficit as you, as you get through to October, November, December. I think you do, you do, eight, April.
April.
Yes.
Under the financial regulations, unfortunately, budget pre-forecast should come to the council on a quarterly basis. Which had broken down.
Yeah, forecast gets out during that.
Um, there was no forecast really regularly coming to the council at all. Um, that, we're now, that's, we're now getting into a sequence along getting the coding better, that we can.
When I, when I look at.
Um, but, um, that's what should happen. There is being, for certain reasons, a heightened expenditure in the first two months of each year, but that should slow down if you go through the year. But that's why I forecastly, from an amenities committee point of view, they need to know, once we've got a clear position, what funds we've actually got. Now, we are holding still quasi-percentage sum of money. Um, but, um, we just need a clearer position, so I can say to the amenities committee, when you're in public, they're like, a hundred thousand or whatever it is. Yeah, that's, that's what we wish to do, isn't it?
Um, yes, it is. We, um. I can't remember what I was going to say, no, it's gone by my head.
But if you could check, because I'm sure it's four ninety two, if we go back.
Oh, yeah, whatever the budget is.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're now going to have, resort all our budget out, I mean, because we did, I did ask the internal auditor to see if I could change all the budget around, because some of the budget headings have all gone table, so that's what we're now going to look at doing.
I mean, we have a budget heading called other.
And miscellaneous and things like.
Absolutely. Old school hidden load.
That's, that's what it's saying, yeah, nobody knows, nobody knows what.
Always have the miscellaneous.
And again, in the forecast, the budget again is four eight, three, seven, I think Jess, that's last year's, rather than last.
You'll have a look at that, actually.
So can I ask you to have a look at that? And then and have a, and do the coding revision, and then I think we'll get a fair, a clearer position about. So, um, I just think in the minute, we just said these were draft reports, and we've asked for them to be, to be brought back.
Yeah.
Okay, before anybody, somebody looks, just to look at them in detail, we want these to be tightened up and brought back. And ideally, when we, and ideally, if it's possible, Jess, all in charge, but. But the coding stuff.
The coding exercise will. We could do that next week, can't we?
I've put a week meant in the twenty third of June.
But if you look at the budget, I mean, Wendy's got all, all papers still.
So coding will trend where we are making the spend as any way, and also.
The coding is horrendous.
It is.
The overall, we weren't going to do that, weren't we?
I mean, budgeting is never a completely accurate science, but no organisation could operate unless it has fairly accurate budget pre-arrangements.
Right.
We haven't spent five years on doing district councils, but it was always horror, horror, really great deficit moving forward, and then come reality, and we never were. But there we are.
That was your sleight of hand coming up on the budget.
That's why, well, I think it's tight enough, yes. I've got the main gold thing. Um, okay, so I think that's the budget and the forecast is, unless you've got anything else, which do I think?
No.
Right. Okay, so if we can, I move that, can I have a second?
Yeah.
That's what we do, is that all right, Jess? Now, once you've had a look at this, if you want to give me a call, Wendy, come in and I'll look at it. I can do that. Um. Right, to review budgeting retreats and agree amendment requirements on all accounts.
Um. May need amending.
Who are the budgeting committees?
The R F O, the finance officer, myself, the clerk. And and I think you are on, so it's the R F O, myself, you and Bob on the C C M A one. I think it's myself, the old R F O on the redwood one. And myself and the old R F O. That's it. We need to remove April.
Right. Um, so how do we do that? Um, do you want to bring that, can you get on and do that?
Yes, I can do that, I just want to connect it with.
Yes, if you could, if you could update.
So, um. I wouldn't quite like another person on the, wouldn't we, on the unity trust account.
Who's on it now? Bob and me?
No, you're not on it, so there's me, Jess and Bob.
Come on, I'll do it then.
Yeah.
Just somebody else.
So can we do online banking and that?
Um, I do it on my personal bank account.
Jess will give you permission, I will give you a trade.
It's nice to see technology monks at all, yeah.
I think if they got it late, that's why.
Does that need to be proposed?
Because I was coding, coding in basic, in early nineteen eighties.
Um, can somebody propose Eric go on to the unity trust if I can?
Post that?
We can sort it out.
Uh, the cost code, well, we've already discussed that, haven't we?
Yeah.
Um, I know, we're, we're still working on that, so.
Right, items for the next agenda, um, I don't know if we need to make a decision, others can be mentioned and then trained to go. Have you got to organise another training session?
All right. Mandatory, do you want me, finance, I mean, Roger's doing all his code of conduct and induction training and stuff like that, you've done it recently, haven't you?
I mean, I did it last June, July, I almost.
Yeah, I think there is going to be something to go through, and they, somebody might be coming in to go through the standard orders and the financial basics and stuff like that. I mean. If there's any, if there is.
How up to date are you with parish council or local government?
Not too bad, we're just going to get that through work with the government finance piece requirements, but also master just probably, people would get for technical arrangements that we do.
The only thing I could say is that, you know, I was familiar with obviously the county and the districts, that the our district in particular, there are certain quirks with the parish, parish council. That's a thing called an A G A return, which the, the, the other tier councils. Um, so they're all on the two quarks.
Yeah.
But the principles are the same.
I've, I've got to actually do any of the kind of things now.
So, we'll see what you want to do.
Yes, no, I'll, I'll find some stuff to do.
Right, okay, so I've got my specific, um, the only thing I was saying, given that next meeting's not until September, getting that involved with certain things, I'm back to it, I'm going to need to wait that one.
No, we have another one.
Right. Can we agree a date tonight or would you want to circle it to?
I'm quite free, you know.
Well, you've been on holiday as well.
Oh, no, but I've given up my other count, because I used to clerk for other councils, but I just resigned from them.
Oh, my.
So if you want to come and come and Jess, I'm.
We'd like to see you, Jess.
She may not want to see us, so do you just?
When have we got, we've got D N A on the first, haven't we?
July, is that?
We're not, we're beginning the fourteenth, it's coming our way.
No, I'm not here, we're beginning the twenty first.
Can we always ping a team as a, or a Zoom attached to this?
No, we cannot.
We are.
Go, 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 I think teams. I think there will be a time when we have hybrid meetings, it's going to come in.
Where is he not allowed? Is that, would the town councils agree that?
No, no.
It's local government.
All right. Preston?
And during Covid, we obviously had to help them.
There was a special arrangement, government said.
There was the slightest relaxation, and there was still restrictions on other bodies or where people had meetings. Councils were told to get back to meeting person. It's, which didn't go down too well.
Well, N C C didn't go to work, did they? Council get what they're waiting for. That's just it, it, because it frees up more people to attend, doesn't it, where?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, you can have, you can have meetings during the day, and, I mean, you could have committee meetings during the day, but then beforehand, there was a lot of people on.
So in July, I mean, you would have a bit of work to do, so you're away, Jess, or when the Paul's away on the seventh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
It's for holidays as well, isn't it?
I'm, I'm away really from the fourteenth to the nineteenth. I can't do the twenty second, back end of July, so it's any time after really sort of twenty, July. I'll do the twenty second.
What are you doing at twenty ninth?
Uh, twenty third, twenty third is full council in Cromer.
Twenty fourth.
Oh, twenty ninth is full council.
Yeah, here, I've got, I've got, and then DC the week before.
What about the twenty fourth?
Uh, yeah. No provisions, that and I'll check.
I'm not here, but Jess can do it.
Right, you're, Jess, is that all right, Jess?
Yes, I would prefer you to be there, yeah. I can do the.
Twenty eighth.
I can do the thirty first or the twenty eighth, yeah, like you do twenty eighth of July.
Oh.
Monday twenty eighth, yeah, so it's me.
Right, let's start from the twenty eighth.
So you're giving a session, yes, you can follow that up.
And then what I suggest is, because you're away the week before, I think you just can get the papers.
Oh, yes.
And then in terms of the agenda, we could sort the agenda out before you go away, and then you can do all the bits.
And we know what items need to go on for the next agenda, because they'll just be those bits. Then, and then also there will be a five session as well. And fifteen. Right, twenty eighth of July.
About six thirty.
About six thirty, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's right, we are conditioning my days, we've got, we've got full council following, yeah.
Is it weeks for you?
What, twenty ninth?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Oh, yes, it's open.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll skip off for us.
Yeah, because I've got relegated as royalty in August, so.
Right, okay, well, that's. Are you all, thank you, Robert?
Seven thirty two.
If anything comes to the meeting, I won't stop, check documents now, just file that one, I'm happy to look.
Yeah.
Read through.